Let's go ahead and start. I'd like to call to order our August 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Welcome, everybody. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from July 7.
And before we get into that, if I may, we did have a request for Agenda Item A from the applicant to hold that over to the next month. They're going to be readjusting their property lines and need to re-advertise that property.
Sure, that's no problem. All right.
And Mr. Chairman, we do need to re-approve the minutes from the June 6th meeting because at the last meeting, we made a motion with no second. So I would just like to re-approve those.
Okay, sounds good.
As well as these.
Wait.
June 6th, right, June 6th.
A is...
Yes, sir.
Asked to be held over.
That's correct. They're changing the... they're changing what they want to request to be B2. So they've got to re-advertise. All right, do I have a motion to approve the June 6th meeting minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All the discussion say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the July 7th minutes?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, as Hunter just mentioned, if you just came in, the Item A, the public hearing to consider the request of Jay Consulting for the land on Gueno to be rezoned, 21 acres to be two, is going to be held over until the next meeting, which puts this on SD 22. Dot 21, Item B.
Good evening. This is a... the request of 404 Oak LLC for a four-unit multiple occupancy project approval at 404 Oak Street. It's an existing building that is being renovated. So there will be three residential units and one office unit. Lieb Engineering Company is the engineer for the project. The property is zone B4 and it lies within the Central Business District and is approximately 6,054 square feet. It's located on Oak Street and lies west of Bancroft Street. So as you can see, this is the first floor plan. It's got the office and one of the residential units. The second floor has two residential units as well, and all of these were provided in your packets. So this is the most recent... the most recent version of the site plan. It shows three parking spaces as well as an ingress egress easement across 406 Oak Avenue. So all connections work within the City of Fairhope right-of-way will require permitting from the City of Fairhope, and due to the fact that the building is existing, they're going to utilize the same existing services and bill them to the tenants from the property owner. So the traffic study was not triggered for the project, and then due to the fact that the building is existing, drainage and landscaping were not required for these interior renovations. A sidewalk will be installed along Oak Street within the right-of-way, and they met with Public Works and got it approved. It is shown in the plans and it is ADA compliant. So in terms of parking, there are three spaces required for the three residential units. One space is required to be van-accessible, and they have provided that. Let's see. The only request that we really have is that the applicant revise the concrete area to include the space behind the van space to make it more stable for the handicapped driver of the vehicle.
Okay.
All right. General comments, a replat will have to be provided to remove the historic lot lines, and all work done in the right-of-way will require permitting from the City of Fairhope. So in summary, staff recommends approval with the following conditions: a replat to remove the common lot lines and the extension of the concrete along the ADA-compliant van parking space.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Nope.
All right, in that case, we'll see. Would anybody on behalf of the applicant wish to speak at this time? In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? This is just right over here on Oak Street, about a block away. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Wait, 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 Lee.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Come on up and state your name. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Just a quick question.
Yeah, if you'll state your name and your address for the... for our record.
Sheriff John Moore, 152 North Section Street. So just wanted to clarify, is these are apartments, or is it Airbnb like it has been for the last few years, or what is it?
Well, we're doing a... we are actually doing a multiple occupancy for three residences and one business. Whether they move... and this is, you know, whether they move in the residences or use them as an Airbnb or what have you is their business, whatever's allowed. In that area, is Airbnb allowed in that area?
Short-term rentals are allowed.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, they could do short-term, or they could live there.
It's just a question. It's been an Airbnb ever since I've been in Fairhope, so it doesn't matter. But I was just wondering if it was intended, which way it was intended, but if that's not... if it's irrelevant, then it's irrelevant.
It's not my purview. I've heard... I think I've heard through the grapevine that they're looking at short-term rentals, but don't...
Right, right. So if it's irrelevant, that's okay.
But don't hold me to that, but that's what I've heard through the grapevine.
That is the applicant's intent, but like you stated, we don't approve... we don't have a use as short-term rental.
Right.
It's residential and can be used as a short-term rental.
Got it. Just an inquiry. Thank you.
It'd be a good place for one, nice walk-in from a lot of restaurants. All right, anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners?
I have one question, and this may be more of a permitting thing. On that, residents on the bottom floor, where's the bathroom?
That will have to be done to meet... we just got plans, a preliminary plan for how the units are spaced out. So through permitting, they're going to have to meet all the codes.
That's a permitting thing, right?
Yes, and I believe only one unit in the ground floor will have to be ADA compliant. Obviously, there's no elevator for the PUs upstairs, so they do not have to be. But that'll be Eric Cortez's question.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Case SD 22 point 21, 404 Oak Avenue, MOP. I move that we approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to approve subject to staff recommendations. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SD 22 point 22, Parkstone.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this is Parkstone. We heard this last month. It is a 41-lot major subdivision, approximately 12.84 acres, located on the east side of Highway 98, on the north side of Parker Road, right across from the Fairhope Publix. The aerial and zoning is on your screen. The plat, site data, a blow-up of the plat for reference if we need to come back. The landscaping, as we talked about last month, the approved landscape plan calls for a 12-by-12 gazebo, the northern common area, walking trails through the common areas, benches placed in the common areas. Applicant has requested that the benches be installed once the home construction is done for fear of theft. Due to a drainage inlet installed in the wrong location, excuse me, the applicant requested permission to shift lots 38 and 39. Due to the shift, it made the walking trail impractical. They met with staff and showed some drawings with two additional pavilions. Staff supported the move and the change. This is the same slide we saw last of the... last month with the changes. The landscaping, the walking paths have been installed. Said they're made of the rock slag material. However, for more review, the path was not built with the edging to control the overgrowth, the vegetation, the spread of rock and slag material. This was taken this afternoon. This is an image of one of the walking trails leading up to the gazebo, and as you can see, it's already in this state of hadn't even been accepted yet, and the path overgrown and looking kind of not maintained. The 12-by-12 gazebo has been installed. One pavilion has been installed that overlooks the detention pond. The second pavilion has not been installed yet. It has been removed but not reassembled. This is the area of the property where it needs to be located at. Again, they got the landscaping plans as-built that were supplied to us, preliminary and as-built left and right for the differences, which we saw in the other slide. This was the preliminary green space plan that we looked at. Moving to water and sewer, the applicant was allowed to use some existing infrastructure. A final inspection was performed. Some of the outstanding remaining items, the developer has agreed to correct. Some of that work can't be completed due to items being on backorder. So at this time, this slide is different from what we had last. We had more outstanding items, so we'll run through this. The developers currently waiting for rain stoppers and chimney seals to come in. The water and sewer department will verify that they have been installed prior to signing the final plat. The road to the lift station, currently gravel. It had some areas of washout that has been corrected. The drainage swell has been lined with filter cloth and riprap. Due to some concerns of this not being a permanent fix, the water department reserves the right to re-inspect that road after six months, and at the discretion of the water and sewer superintendent, require a new solution, which could include an asphalt or concrete drive to be installed in the easement to service the lift station at the developer's expense. The manhole at the intersection of Lower Way and Treadstone Way will be monitored and may require modification to include a sweep to the west and a corner of the concrete cutout. Essentially, there were a couple manholes that gave the water and sewer department concern that they may not function as needed in the future, but instead of having them do it now, because it was close, is to monitor it, and if it becomes a problem with things being clogged in the sewer line of having them go back, we have the maintenance period, be able to look at that during, and if an alteration does need to be made, or an invert re-adjusted to have it done at that time. The fence around the lift station has been started but has not been completed. The road to the lift station on the screen is a picture of that currently. On the left is the riprap. I've talked about the swell being lined. You see a little sediment buildup there in the middle, but this will be monitored by the water and sewer department for the next several months. For the fencing, the gate still needs to be built and installed, and one section was missing the actual pickets along the west side of the fence. Staff recommends approval with conditions of SD 22 point 22 with the following: one, all water and sewer items remaining are corrected and approved by the water and sewer department; two, the water and sewer department shall re-inspect the road to the lift station as described in the staff report; the water and sewer department will monitor the manholes and may require some modifications of the inverts during and/or at the end of the maintenance period; the benches in the common areas shall be installed prior to issuance of the first CO; the walking trails shall be redone according to the approved detail, and the second pavilion shall be installed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff. We have Mr. Tom Granger, the engineer of record, and Chris Brewer on behalf of the developer with us tonight.
All right. Any questions for staff at this time?
Question for you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
With these staff recommendations based on last month, is what's been done that was not done last month when this thing got pushed over to this month, is it substantially completed, in your opinion?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Couple of items have not been finished. The... some of the things that were completed, there was some work on some of the inverts. Grates have been put on. The striping across Parker Road has been completed. There's no more public work comments related to this and the items that we were waiting on. There has been an effort to complete them, and I believe maybe with weather, could have been the holdup on some of the items not being actually finished at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. Tom, do you Chris, y'all have anything to add at this time? All right, anybody... is this... anybody from the public wish to speak to this item at this time? Not, I'll close the public hearing if it is in fact a public hearing. Was it... does it open and cut? Well...
You did it last minute.
Just in case we need another public hearing, we opened it and closed it. If that's... all right. I'll go ahead and turn this over to Commissioners at this time. Any further questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, play a case, SD 22 point 22, Parkstone. I move that we approve subject to staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor to approve subject to staff recommendation, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, motion to hold old and new business over to next month.
I got... I have a motion to see if we could get Hunter Simmons to sit down.
Five-thirty was the goal, so 13 minutes. We're going to run through this pretty quick. So as y'all know, we've got some amendments to make. I'm going to give a timeline here because we will, over the next few months, have to discuss some things. We're going to try to handle a lot of that detail over the next course of the next probably four to six weeks, so you'll be hearing from us more offline. I'd like to have some meetings with a few of you at a time to discuss. We kind of met in the Nick Center a few months ago, but just to give you a timeline of what we're going to do, throughout the month of August, we're going to be talking with you in work groups and in staff level. Like to invite you all, we're going to be kind of giving an update from the moratorium to the second council meeting of this month during the work session, so if you don't have a chance to come, we'll have it online. That's going to be catching up with what all projects are approved and where they're at, going back to 2009. So a little update there. In September, we will be having an agenda item for discussion, but not anything in front of you for adoption. Getting feedback from developers, engineers, architects. October, we will have our first list of items to be adopted for both zoning code amendments as well as subdivision amendments. We're leaving room to have some revisions in November, but got to move the zoning amendments forward, and then in 2023, we will be looking at a comprehensive plan, new comprehensive plan, and come back and revise those ordinances one more time. So those priorities, we've got some amendments that are in reaction to our moratorium. Those are the sense of urgency items that we're going to be trying to get before the end of the year. And then after the... into the new year, we'll be looking at those long-range goals, and the comp plan team will be assisting us with those amendments. So real quick, and I'm not going to read these. I'm going to send you guys this via email. It's a list of the things we're going to try to accomplish before the end of the year. Some of these are probably not going to get to, especially when it comes to the zoning amendments, but we need some new districts, conservation districts. I will mention, that's a new zoning district we want to propose that will be in the zoning warrants, but also have some components in the subdivision regulation. We need some recreation districts as well. The... looking through here, I don't think there's anything to really... we've talked about a lot of these, but I will have this for you for your review. In subdivision regulation amendments, I want to mention a couple of... we're proposing some new exemptions that are done administratively. Utility lots or public infrastructure lots are one of those items when we have a lift station. Having that done where it can be done administratively, that's something the city's generating public for public infrastructure, conservation lots. That's maybe a bigger one, but does that come to planning commission, or does that need to be administrative? And then those MOP closeouts procedures. Fire protection, I do want to mention this one as well. We met with the volunteer fire departments, which we have three of them within our jurisdiction, and they are getting... they're really the last one to find out about some subdivisions. So we want to make an amendment to our subdivision regulations. On the front end, one of the first things they have to do is go out and get a fire flow test. They are all wanting to be there and make sure those tests are done pursuant to the regulations in place, whether that's ISO or NFPA. So we want to make that a requirement before anyone submits an application to us. That's been done. Stormwater, I'm going to save some... there are a couple of things I will get in the weeds just a hair about, just to get you thinking. We've got some environmental, are we doing things right, lots, just having some standards notes, green space, we've talked about trying to clarify that. Roads and traffic, how we're reviewing those projects, what we're going to require of those reviews. We've debated some of those things, and just providing a better, more accurate study and results from those. Procedurally, you know, we've got the new zoning districts with a county. That's... we've only had those on the bay when we have county. Is that going to be something, because it meets their zoning, that we're going to support in our regulations? Historically, if there's zoning in place by county and it requires a waiver from our subdivision regulations, we've granted that. For example, building height, we cap it at 30 feet. If the zoning from the county allows them to do 40, is that something we're going to create... prove a waiver? So questions there. MOP process, final plats and bond closeouts, agenda clarifications, all these things we've discussed. Other ordinances and reviews that don't necessarily have an immediate impact to planning, but it's certainly integrated. The utility... one of the biggest ones is the utility departments are getting together and they're having a monthly meeting. So instead of us... really, we see a lot more utility questions in our projects and in these meetings than I've ever been privy to. They're going to be handling... the goal is to handle some of those before we ever get to applications. So we're not kind of... you even see the punch list items, and even at the planning stage, we need to revise our fee schedules, you know, inventory that will be presented to the council, citizen server finally going live, and bike pad. So just a little bit in the weeds, see if we're on the right direction, because this is something, especially recently, we have dealt with in cases on stormwater management. So one of the... Michelle has done a great job looking at other regulations and seeing what we can basically rob. This won't be the exact format we'll put it in, but the highlighted areas are where I've kind of... I think we're the teeth of some of the changes we want to make. There is this section for waivers required, when it's required, so I want to highlight that. This is not every case, but whatever threshold we set, whether it's adverse effect, potential for adverse effects or a known issue, then this is required, and it requires a waiver signed by the adjacent property owner allowing that. And I'll show you where that kind of comes in in just a minute, and the way... is the way we're thinking about it. A form letter, every project comes in. We... y'all all know what pre-development and post-development means, but having that explicitly stated and signed off by the engineer is something we have... should have on record. We've talked about runoff, volume versus flows. A lot of regulations actually reference volume. It's more general, and it doesn't get to the... when you're looking at the design criteria, but it does mention it and gives an option there when it... when excessive volume does create problems. This is kind of where the teeth of what we're looking at. So there's three options here when... and that top highlighted, which basically any stormwater that's been diverted from its pre-development natural flow to cross adjoining property lines. That's come up in many cases, but we haven't had the what-if. You know, what do you do if that's happening and we don't feel comfortable? So what we're trying to accomplish here is, here's the answer. And we give the developer options. We give the design engineer options. So number one, there's close to what we're requiring right now. Number two is where that waiver comes into place. That's if they're willing... if they can get a waiver from an adjacent property owner, or if it's a county or city right-of-way, and we grant that, then move forward. When they can't get either one of those things, there is a... basically, they're designing for 100-year, just like they do in the other, but I've highlighted here 10-year, 10-year, and 2-year. So that difference is they're designing to retain water at 100-year, sizing the ponds that way, but releasing it at a slower rate, at a 2-year rate. Ponds get bigger, you help the adjacent property owner relieve that option. So it gives options. That's what we're trying to accomplish. And to go ahead and... where we can tell people what their options are and not go through three months' meetings, and we're trying to debate laws that have nothing to do with planning commission.
Is that actually doable?
Absolutely.
Down here? I'm talking about... that'd be one thing if you were...
That's Mobile right there. That's Mobile's regulations today.
Well, that doesn't mean a lot. I do a lot of stuff with Mobile, and... but my point is, our weather here is so radical. It can be 10 inches in a month, or it can be 10 inches in an hour.
Nothing's going to solve the...
Well, that's... that's my point.
Yeah.
So I mean, you can regulate it all day long. Whether it's actually doable or it's workable is another question.
For an engineer to design that, that has very clear instructions on what to design for. It doesn't mean there's not a once-in-every-10-year, a 500-year event that stops everything.
That's about every other year, you know that.
Right.
Well, there are a lot of issues, like if you have a five-inch rain one day, the day before you have the 10-inch rain, you know, and your retention ponds are already full, that's a lot different than if you've had a drought for a month and then a 10-inch rain.
That's my point. It can be... for week to weekend, it can be that variable.
But they got their books that show, you know, how... what kind of...
Yeah, their models are very clear on...
What they got to do, so it becomes non-subjective and more objective.
It gives us an option that we can say, okay, we've got an existing condition, or there's an adjacent property owner that's worried about what you're putting. And it also gives us an option to not have a mass balance equation where there's different drainage sheds on one property. And there's a... in those cases, there's typically a winner and a loser. Somebody's getting their drainage on the property is getting better, some is getting worse. That meets our regulations right now. So this gives us an option to better distribute that and have another measurement when we need it. That's all I've got for tonight.
I got... well, you mentioned, I got three comments. On those waivers, I'd like to talk to you about that. One time, I signed a waiver on one of my pieces of property for my neighbor to access his dumpster on my property, and since, you know, they put wheelchair ramps and ramps to... for this and that, and I felt kind of like, you know, the guy was an insurance customer. I wanted to be a nice neighbor, and I felt kind of like, you know, almost like I kind of had to. But the point is, if somebody doesn't have enough land to put their dumpster on their own land, maybe we don't want to ask the neighbor for a waiver. Maybe they need to downsize their buildings a little bit and be able to keep their utilities on their own property.
Yeah.
You know, like that one apartment we had that, you know, you look out here and you see, you know, I'm being more and more bothered by water meters out. There's one right by that Mexican restaurant where a water meter cover's missing right in the middle of a sidewalk.
Yeah.
I mean, do we really need to have water meters on sidewalks from a public safety standpoint? You know, I'm all for maximizing and protecting the central business district, but that's one comment that, you know, should look at. Another is with the utilities, having those avoid P and Z. I don't know if principally that makes a lot of sense, and when you see like that big nasty, you know, electric box right there in one of the most expensive parks with one of the most beautiful views we have that for a few thousand dollars more could have been put underground, I think maybe we need more of a review of those things and more eyes to see them and more attention rather than just have an engineer say, what's the cheapest way to get a utility box right here and hold them to the same standards that we hold our developers to? And then finally, the short-term rentals, I think anything we can do to encourage those and have more areas where you can do those. The number one thing, and then our last comprehensive plan, is that, you know, pretty much everybody unanimously agreed on is that downtown Fairhope makes Fairhope Fairhope, and we need to protect it. And one of the best ways to protect it is to keep the retail businesses vibrant, so we don't just end up with attorney's offices and insurance agent's offices and things like that. And the more short-term rentals that you have, you know, those people spend a lot of money per capita and a lot of money in the downtown area, and with all of the weddings that we have, it's amazing how many people have to stay in Daphne because we don't have the hotel rooms for them. And I just think whatever we can do to encourage those short-term rentals will certainly help the downtown business district. And they seem to work out great in Carmel and, you know, and Delray Beach and a lot of these places, there aren't, you know, really many complaints.
And I think we need to look at a use that would be appropriate for that, because I don't think getting them approved as residential units, because we don't allow an apartment complex downtown without having that commercial component. But our current, you know, either a hotel or bed and breakfast, it's hard to meet that for a true...
I think maybe look at it from an overlay standpoint, within X distance of Y. You can allow short-term rentals, something like that.
Well, all CBD allows short-term rentals now, but it's the underlying use that we need to have a match.
I'm talking about liking the fruits and nuts and the...
We used to have overlay of the... like, we talked about having an overlay of the CBD, what the future overlay is, and we need to kind of clarify that because there's a lot of opportunity for businesses, which are VRBOs, that are, like Lee says, generating a lot of money when they're spending $700, $800 a night for downtown. That's the kind of business you want to have in town. They're not...
And I tend to think the trends of what it is, so if we have them with... And I tend to think the trends of what it is, so if we have them approved as residences, they can revert back to that.
I'm just talking about, I'm talking about kind of more of an overlay of allowing, like, maybe in the certain areas, the fruits and nuts, or certain areas of the bluff, and a certain distance from the central business district, something like that, just allowing the residential zonings to allow short-term rentals. Or just, and you know, I don't think, don't think you have to do anything to allow it. I think that it overall would be allowed, but I think we've got regulations that don't allow it. We've got regulations that rentals have to be six-month minimum, and if we remove that regulation, I think you could have short-term rentals in that area.
There's a lot, lot of thoughts on that. You get the people that come in for the one night and throw the big bash where 500 people show up.
Didn't we go through that a few years ago?
Accessory dwelling units.
We had an accessory dwelling that we passed, and it never made it through. City Council got, got buried, but basically, the concern was that in the entire fruits and nuts and central business district, you were gonna have houses plopped next door to every house that was there. But if you actually read the, the way that the accessory dwelling was done, it was really pretty brilliant. Gary Moore spent hours and hours on it, but basically, you could have an accessory dwelling, but you could not violate any setback, and you couldn't violate the footprint. So where you see houses like, you know, next door to the White Avenue Park, where, you know, they've got the, you know, little, supposedly it doesn't have a bathroom, you know, connected by a little this that eventually gets the bathroom later, and the whole thing's taken. What this was gonna set up was that you had to meet all the setbacks, and you couldn't, you couldn't increase the footprint. So when you look in that central business district and in the Summit, you know, area up there, Summit and Bayview, very few lots large enough to allow a mother-in-law cottage, very few. I mean, you might get a dozen, which would be great, but in new subdivisions, they would be very easy to put in, and that's something that a lot of people want. But, you know, when I went to Carmel and toured that area and Delray Beach, they were having no issues at all with short-term rentals. My wife was just dating one with my daughter over the weekend at Santa Barbara, no issues. They're allowed in, in, you know, all those upper, upper-end towns have them now. But, you know, there are ways to shut the parties down. I mean, you have rules, and, you know, the police just show up, and if they're renting a house for a house party, police can shut that down in five minutes, and they wasted their money.
I mean, there's, we're tying two things together. I mean, it's like. Accessory dwelling units, dude, does not mean they're actually.
But I mean, you can almost argue a regular home saying, you know, don't let people have homes, because maybe they have teenage kids, and the teenage kids are gonna throw big parties. I mean, that happens. I drove home one day from Big Daddy's, and we had 120 cars in our yard, and somebody had driven through our gate, you know, and that was what my daughter considered a small party. Didn't last very long, but, but anyway, that, that's something that would really help the downtown central business district, that, you know, I love us to look into and maybe, you know, take into account, you know, things like how to prevent it from, you know, you know, being a party rental, that type of thing.
Okay. All right.
One more thing. Where do we, where does the city stand now with discussions with the county on our territorial jurisdictions?
No, no reply. We've sent, no reply from the county to our letters that were sent from our council and mayor.
When was that last done?
Been a while.
Been a while.
Part of, part of the issue was to wait and see with the county elections, to see who the elected officials would be. SB 107 has some timeframe parameters that are gonna be starting next year, gonna start applying, so.
Well, it's gonna start applying, and it's, it's real, I have to just go back, you know, we talked about a comprehensive plan, and you alluded to it here, but how do you, how do you plan for something you don't even know where you're going to be and what area are you going to have the capability of planning within?
And the county's position previously was, sign this agreement, and then we can talk about whether or not we're gonna allow you to expand beyond the corporate limits. I mean, the original agreement that was proposed by the county tracks the language from the state statute, which after another year and a half would reduce the planning jurisdiction to the city to its corporate limits.
And we did receive a letter that said that.
And we, and we received a letter from the county saying that was their intent, and the city responded and said, we would propose a uniform planning police, you know.
Permit.
Permit jurisdiction of about a mile and a half beyond the corporate limits to try to make it a uniform boundary for clarity and for the, for the community to understand, so there's not all these different jurisdictions and maps. And the county has kind of, at least previously said, we'll sign this agreement first, then we can talk about that.
Are they treating every municipality that way?
Yes.
And who is the contact at the county that you've communicated with?
Their council.
Is it?
Previously, it was their council.
Their council.
They're handling it.
So it's not Matthew Brown, it's not the Commissioner?
It's ultimately the Commissioner.
They've all been involved in the discussions, but there's council involved as well.
I mean, it's coming sooner than later.
You're right.
Will I have a motion to the chairman?
I'll move.
I don't have so much money, I can't stand it. Thinking I'm gonna.
Second. Oh, second, aye.